Seven o'clock, so we'll call this order. Are we on? Yes, we are. Call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First order of business is to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ann, are you going to take a roll call?
Sure thing. Agustinelli here. McManus.
Here.
Robertson.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Be good.
Here.
Fudge.
Here.
Racine.
Here. The next order of business is public comment. If any members of the public have anything they'd like to comment about, ask us or tell us. You're free to come forward now. We will also have another public comment period toward the end of our meeting. So if anybody has anything they'd like to say, feel free to come to the mic, state your name, and tell us what you want to tell us. And seeing no interest in that at this point, we'll close that first public comment period. Next item is a review and approval of our agenda, and if anyone has any conflicts of interest, we should hear about that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Support.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a review of the minutes of the February 28th meeting, which was a joint meeting with the Town Board. That wasn't in the packet, but it's on our desk in front of us this evening. Are there any suggested modifications to the, to those minutes?
I make a motion. We adopt the minutes as presented.
Support.
Is there any further discussion on those? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The next item is correspondence. John, do we have some correspondence?
We did include an article that was from the Michigan Planner Magazine, which you should all be receiving as members of the Michigan Chapter of the American Planning Association. There's just a simple two-pager regarding how to talk about housing in your community and just give some points about, to be helpful for. Planning Commission will be talking about housing at the study session later this month. FYI, that's the only correspondence we have.
And next on the agenda is reports. Molly, any Town Board report this evening?
No, you guys were at the last meeting and I was now.
Okay, fair enough. Planning Commissioners, any reports? Bob, anything from the ZBA of late?
No meetings, sir.
Okay. Chris, how about Parks and Rec?
Just working on, the staff actually has more report than I do, but they're working diligently on the grant, Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant, Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant, thank you, for the commons work. So that will be going in at the end of the month.
Great, thanks. Joe, anything new on the Joint Planning Commission?
I don't know. Haven't had a meeting.
You know something I don't know?
Yeah.
Good. Staff, any kind of staff report this evening?
Staff report is mostly in writing. I'll just echo, though. The Trust Fund Grant, the Township Board is actually have a public meeting at their meeting this coming Tuesday, which was noticed in the paper, so public is invited to that if you want to see the grant application or make comment on the grant application. And also on your desks, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which Parks and Rec Commission worked very diligently to guide us through that and contributed that, and the public who contributed that. The board adopted this in January. It was submitted to DNR and they approved it. So it's official 100% now, so hard copies are provided to everyone.
Thank you, Steve. If there's no other staff report, we'll move along on the agenda. First is unfinished business, and I'm not seeing any unfinished business, so I guess we move on to new business. First item is Planning Department Report 2023-28, Hickory Forest and Hickory Meadows rezoning introduction. John, you, or Steve?
Steve's going to handle this one.
Get us going on this one?
All right. Thank you, John. So this is an application for rezoning of, there's a parcel immediately to the west of Hickory Hills, intended to be being called Hickory Forest. This is in the process of being 100% officially acquired by the Joint Rec Authority between the city and township, the Joint Rec Authority. And as part of reviewing this, we wanted them to include the parcels for Hickory Meadows as well. The township actually has a Parks and Recreation District. It doesn't actually include the township's own parks, since we have a completely separate ordinance outside of our zoning ordinance for the township parks, but there's only a handful that are actually in this district. It's Hickory Hills, I think down at Keystone Soccer Complex. But the application is to rezone these into the Park and Recreation District, so it would match Hickory Hills immediately between them. And then also when we updated our zoning ordinance a couple of years ago, we kind of clarified a few definitions of things, including like kind of intensity of different types of parks. And the long-term goal for Hickory Forest is to develop some trails and a trailhead there. So this would, if it were just in that district, it would make that just a by right administrative review of kind of whatever that impact would be and sort of align these to what these are. The one that's going to be Hickory Forest is currently zoned ag, and Hickory Forest is actually made up of three parcels that are all in R1. And the applicant is here.
You just said Hickory Forest. Did you mean Hickory Meadows is the one that's three parcels?
Hickory Meadows, yes, is the one in three parcels, yeah. The clearest depiction of the zoning is on page four, but we did put a couple comments. The future land use map actually does show all the Hickory Meadows parcels as recreational in the future land use. It did not show Hickory Forest, but on the future land use specifically, however, other goals in the master plan talk about preserving property, and this particular piece went to a vote of the people, which approved the acquisition of this property as well. So there's sort of other things to take a look at as well. And as we move along in this, if so directed by the Planning Commission, we'll look at the approval criteria, which are listed below as well. But that's mostly what we have to say on this, and the applicant's here to answer your questions as well.
Okay. Why don't we see if we've got any questions? We may or may not need to hear anything from the applicant.
Perfect.
Commissioners?
Chair, I got one. So does this changing, change in zoning prohibit Hickory Hills from moving its commercial operation onto that property, or is it all park now?
So Hickory Hills, are you talking about like the banquet hall and kind of?
Well, if, whatever, whatever they want to do. I assume because they're joining properties, there'll be trails that'll connect and do all that kind of thing and.
Yeah, I think there will be some connections between all of them. Like the banquet hall and that kind of thing on Hickory Hills is actually under, they have a special use permit, and this is part of what we clarified when we updated the zoning ordinance, was kind of what is that kind of low-intensity park uses, which might be more by right and more of the high intensity like that, which are special use. So that came, I think it was in 2019, they came in front of the, this was shortly after I got here. But they came before the Planning Commission when they actually had, when they were like starting the process of constructing that, and there was some public, so they do have a special use permit for the uses over there that they've been adding.
But that doesn't extend onto this Kropa property?
No, that is, it's technically a separate parcel, so it's not part of this application. And that was owned by the city itself, and then all these are the Joint Rec Authority.
Right, right. Thanks. Thank you.
Any other commissioners with questions or comments? Chris?
There's this, there's those two little parcels between Meadows and Hickory Hills. Are those still privately held?
I think they're still privately held, yeah. This is, yeah, you want to comment on that? Yeah.
Thanks for having us and me tonight, everybody. My name is Matt Cowell. I'm with the Joint Recreational Authority. And those two little parcels are still privately owned, and the private owner has expressed an unwillingness to sell them. So they've just been sitting there for quite a while. There's a pretty tortured history of those parcels. It goes all the way back to the Great Depression. And eventually they became landlocked. Eventually they asked for, to be, to be able to force their way across the city parkland to have egress and ingress into those lots and were denied by a court. It had been 70-something years or so since that, those parcels were landlocked, and the court decided that too much time had passed for them to be able to, to demand access across someone else's property or any kind of forced easement. So, so there they sit. The last time I reached out, I've actually never gotten a response from the current owner or record persons downstate. And, but I don't, it's a goal of the Rec Authorities, and I know it's also a goal of the cities, you know, and those respective rec plans to find a way to finally acquire those pieces and make them a part of one parkland or the other. But right now, today, they're still privately owned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Are they in the recreational zoning district? Are they zoned recreational? Are they still zoned something separate?
They are zoned as rural residential. It's a little difficult to, there's three different shades of green in that map, the lightest being agriculture, the kind of middle being rural residential, which is what these are, and the darkest being park and rec. They all are somewhat green things, so it, yeah, it's a little difficult to tell, but yeah, they're still rural residential.
In our future land use map, they're master planned as recreational, right?
Yeah, so it's sort of anticipated at some point in the future this will happen, but it hasn't happened yet.
But there's no egress, so they would never be residential or?
It's sort of an in limbo. They have no egress, egress, but.
Helicopter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
It'd be nice to add them to one parkland or another, but right now they're segregated. There's signs up and, you know, you understand it's private through there. It's actually, would make for some nice trail connections. To your point, Molly, there will be trail connections between all three properties. We're currently in the process, working jointly with the city on a wayfinding signage plan. Got a grant to do that, so they're, the wayfinding signage across all three properties will look related, and you'll be able to navigate through both owners and across all the properties and know where you are. You know, users tell us they don't really care where those borders or boundaries are.
Who owns them.
Right. But from a management standpoint, it matters, and it's an opportunity for us to be able to communicate who to contact for maintenance on the various parcels or anything like that. So, but it'll be coordinated and, and will make sense to users of the sites, and you won't have to wrestle with the fact that you're crossing invisible property lines if you're on a hike.
Anybody else with any questions? Seems to make a lot of sense what's being proposed. Do we need more, or should we send it for public hearing? As staff has suggested, we might be able to do.
I'll make a motion that application Z 2023-01 be scheduled for public hearing for the April 12th, 2023 Planning Commission regular meeting.
Support.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Great job against great odds, Matt.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, we'll see you in a month.
All right, next on the agenda is Planning Department Report 2023-29, an introduction for Pine Grove Homes special use permit.
Yeah, Steve's going to cover this one as well.
On this, okay.
Orienting myself to this part. All right. So this is an application for special use permit. The site is up at the corner of Meadow Lane Drive and US 31, up at the top of, kind of the top of McCray Hill, as you come around the bend on 31, right next to the U-Haul site, if you've driven up that way. This was, there's a little bit of history to this site, some of the background. There was a previous special use permit for Pine Grove Homes at this, at this site, approved by the Planning Commission on April 11th, 2018, and there was an RDO recorded in June of 2018. However, we wanted to reiterate as staff, per the zoning ordinance, if it's, if substantial construction has not commenced within two years, then that special use permit expires automatically. And other than the provision that asks for a one-year extension, there's really nothing else, and that provision was not sought, and construction did not proceed. So this, that special use permit was considered to be expired. So we're reviewing it based on the standards that we have in front of us in the zoning ordinance now, and that's what the letter kind of goes through, all of that. Given that it was something that was approved before, and at least appears to, what they're proposing is a sale of manufactured homes, basically what they have at their current site down by MSU Federal Credit Union, further down 31, closer to town. The proposal would basically do that same thing up there and kind of move their operations to that. But as I said, we review based on the current standards. So there's a few things specifically with, like the site plan itself, just getting some of the details squared away. But otherwise, what is proposed is what is kind of existing at their current site and what was previously proposed for this site back in 2018. So applicant start here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Hey, Rick, we may or may not need to hear from you. Commissioners, any questions or comments on this?
Is there a shared drive between Pine Grove and U-Haul?
It, I.
Is it just one entrance for both, both sort of parcels?
I believe it's just theirs. We can double check. I think that is just on theirs, though.
What do you mean by theirs?
On, I believe it is on this Pine Grove. At least in the site plan, it's only depicting Pine Grove, but let me double check. It's shown as Chicory Lane private, it's a private drive. It's not a, like with an, it's not just a driveway. It looks like it has an actual.
Yeah, I think that gets access back to Meadow Lane.
Is this go back into Meadow? Yeah, so that's actually a road. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah.
So both parcels with access off that road?
Right. Yeah. But yeah, it's a technically a private road, not a shared, like driveway.
Okay.
Generally consistent with what we approved back in 2018?
I think generally consistent. We wanted to double check some of the things, like access, kind of the way it was drawn on there. There's this kind of long access going behind where they proposed the display, the manufactured homes. Just wanted to make sure that that's maintained. At the first pass of trying to show parking on there, kind of narrowed up some of the drives and make sure like the maneuvering lane is there. They proposed the like storage building in the back, just kind of making sure everything's following that, but generally consistent with what was proposed before. Just wanted to make sure we covered the details.
Anything else, anybody wants to know before we have a public hearing on this? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. An application SUP-2023-01, submitted by, excuse me, submitted by Rick Newman for a special use permit for the sale of prefabricated structures at parcel 0503200120 be accepted and scheduled for public hearing at the regular Planning Commission meeting on April 12th, 2023, subject to the following additional information being provided by the applicant. And those are listed as one through seven on the, on the application.
Support.
The report.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll see you next month. Next up, under new business, is Planning Department Report 2023-30. The, is it Lagon or Ligon? I'm going to.
Lagon, yeah.
Lagon, I'm sorry. Bed and Breakfast Special Use Permit, major amendment, and introduction on that.
Yeah, so this was an application that we received to make an amendment to a special use permit for bed and breakfast. The permit was granted by the Planning Commission back February 10th, 2021, to permit no more than four guests at any one time. The ordinance does allow bed and breakfasts in, as the SUP in the agricultural district, so that's why it was permitted at this location, which is off of Haney Lane, a private drive off of Gray Road, just north of Cedar Run Road. So at that time, it was allowed for the bed and breakfast to be established. Since that time, they are now returning to provide for an additional unit in, in that home. So basically, it's one wing off of one side of the house, and then now is another wing off the other side of the house. There are conditions that we apply to bed and breakfast. This is a little bit different than your kind of typical special use permits, but there are conditions, and they're listed in the report. They basically have met all of those requirements for the bed and breakfast. The only item that we did have is that they, we just want to make sure that they're still using that as their main place of residence as a homeowner. Other than that, I think they meet, still meet the requirements of the bed and breakfast. I know they provided some materials to support that. You know, one of the things that, as you know, the township does not really call out the provision of, of short-term rentals, but this is, in essence, kind of a short-term rental, but it is with the conditions that are provided in the ordinance, which are primarily that this is a homeowner operation, that there's some breakfast that is served as provided, and also there are limits in terms of the number of people that can be at this location. Also, we do require that there be distance between these bed and breakfasts. We don't have many in the township, but we do keep track of those and making sure that there, there's a distance that's measured between them.
Thank you, John. Molly?
Yeah, just a question on number eight. When we're talking about the number of occupants, is there a distinction between occupants of the structure and guests? No more than eight occupants shall accommodate any single residence at any one time. So, I mean, if you have eight guests and two owners, then you're over that. Is it, see what I'm saying? Occupants or, do we want to change that to guests, or how do we want to?
That's a very good question. I automatically assumed that that meant guests, I think related to the, because that could be, I mean, essentially, if you're a family of eight, you couldn't, you couldn't have a bed and breakfast.
Right.
I, I was kind of looking at it more like occupant equaling guest.
Maybe we should bank that.
Let me look back at our definition of bed and breakfast, see what that pertains anything to that. Yeah, I'm not seeing anything there. I would, I was assuming that it was related back to the, basically occupants equals guests.
Yeah, the, in section 713, you're, you're right, that standard as listed actually says no more than eight occupants.
Or a single residence.
Yeah.
And that includes the whole building, so.
Yeah. No more than eight occupants shall be accommodated in any single residence at any one time in the ag district. The definition of bed and breakfast says, "A private residence that offers sleeping accommodations to transient tenants is the innkeeper's residence in which the innkeeper resides while renting the rooms to transient tenants and serves breakfast at no, no cost." So it doesn't say occupants. It says accommodations to transient tenants being guests, and then the residence is the innkeeper's residence. So you're right, this I think could be interpreted, it's a little ambiguous.
I just want to have trouble down the road. I mean, if you're saying you can only have eight occupants and a single residence.
Right.
Well, that's a residence.
Yeah.
If you're meaning guests, then let's say guests.
Right. But yeah, I think we would have to go with what the ordinance on the standard says as currently written, which says eight occupants.
Says it's per house. Well, so you got an owner and wife and two or three kids, and they would never be able to have, you know.
Sounds like we need to amend the ordinance if that's what it says.
I'd say so, too.
But that takes months. We ought to be able to figure out a way to not hold this up.
Don't want to hold those guys up.
Right. Maybe we can, is there a way we can just interpret that?
Well, that's how we were interpreting it prior.
Meanwhile, we get it on our agenda, the recommended to Town Board, we tweak the zoning ordinance like ASAP.
Yeah, I mean, and I will check with Arizona Administrator as well as how, what has been the interpretation prior, because this, I'm aware of this one, and then we, the only one I'm, that we actually reviewed, both Steve and I, was the one that was over on Spring Hill Road. But I'll, we'll get clarification on that, and either way, it will be, I think it needs to be clarified, because occupant probably is, you know, to me is more of a building official term, building code term, and that.
Which would be everybody living there.
Correct, yeah.
If there's any, you know, ambiguity amongst staff, I don't think it would hurt to reach out and get a, an opinion from the township attorney.
Okay. Can I see that? Yeah. Yeah, I think we can double check, and I think we can, if needed, like make a finding essentially that, okay, this is how this is interpreted, anticipating that we would clarify a definition.
Yeah.
But we can make a finding to that effect if we needed to.
I would, unless other issues or problems come up tonight that I haven't heard of, I would hope we could at least keep the process moving here. Schedule this for a public hearing. If in the meantime, or shortly thereafter, you find out we've got an issue, we've already had our public hearing, but we could then take a timeout and not process it further till it's.
Well, if it's one of the specifications that you put in, that that's what we mean, then I think we're safe to move ahead.
You could potentially condition it, too, as like, no more than eight guests per this standard, as interpreted by the township.
I'm curious. So if there's the, I, I see there's the suites on either side of the main house. I'm trying to understand if there's, so if my understanding is, I don't have an understanding of, I understand that more occupants are being requested. It had been four occupants, and they were basically just expanding.
To eight.
To eight occupants.
That's the way I read it.
But if the homeowners are required to live on site while the house is being occupied, I only see two bedrooms on the plans that have been presented.
They live upstairs.
There isn't upstairs.
There's a stairway.
Yeah.
There's a stairway in the second story of the garage.
There's a second level to the, there's a second level. That's why I just wanted to verify residency, because we didn't have that.
So that'll be, that'll be documented.
Because when, when they first came in, there, there was just kind of the granny flat type of, or the accessory kind of side to it, and there was the master bedroom. But now that that is being occupied, both of those are being occupied. That's why I just want verification that they are still living on site.
Mm-hmm.
For that reason, because we don't see the rest of the house. So the only thing that's changing from the original is just they're adding four, four occupants is the intent. Correct.
Okay.
You called out the fact that you need proof of owner occupancy, but that's something you don't need right before we advance this, right?
Correct, yeah.
You just need that before we could finalize anything.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just said, we don't deal a lot with bed and breakfast. You mentioned there aren't very many. And actually, Joe pointed out that the short-term rental term used a couple times. What are the guy, are there guidelines in our ordinance about minimum or maximum length to stay at a bed and breakfast, or anything like that? I mean, I'm just curious what, what's, you know, what's the typical, you know, bed and breakfast, or is there, you know, what, what turns it into, I guess there's nothing that could stop them from staying two weeks or a month, or, or there's probably no rule against leasing a room permanently, I guess. What's, what's, what differentiates between somebody who might rent a room out or bed and breakfast?
So there, well, that's a, I mean, this has to be some, this is essentially kind of like a commercial operation in here, so there, there is, I don't think there's anything that prohibits somebody to spend, you know, let's say, a month in a, in a bed and breakfast. They want to pay that, but it's just a, if they're going to operate it in, in basically in a, this is, is a, a form of a short-term rental. It's not what we typically think of like Airbnb thing, but it is, has these provisions for that. But I, there's nothing there that would, in terms of time limits or anything, like how long somebody would stay there.
I don't know. There used to be. I just, just kind of thinking through it. But, I mean, the big difference is obviously the owners have to be there. They have to occupy the residence, so.
Correct.
It's not a true.
And they have to serve breakfast.
And they have to serve breakfast, is, yeah, that's a, a key provision to that.
Okay.
So.
And you can only have one within a thousand feet of each other, so you're not going to get many of them.
Right. But then, these are, the only restriction on the number of rooms, so to speak, is that, is that eight.
Correct.
Eight occupants. So that would, you know, if, if we determine that eight occupants are, are guests and not residents, and you had, you could technically have four two-bedroom rentals in one unit at that, at that point. Okay.
Well, I guess that, that actually, you know, it, it's interesting. I would be interested in how these eight occupants are spread throughout the house, and then, you know, how, what's the intent there? So if you could seek further clarification, along with just, you know, the, the verification, because it would be, I don't know, I mean, what's to stop somebody from sleeping in their basement or, or wherever, you know, and, and renting out all of the bedrooms in the house? You follow me?
To eight separate people? Is that what you're thought, if you have eight bedrooms?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, right now, from the pictures, it looks like there's basically, it was four, and then there are two rentable units with, and I can imagine adding a trundle bed or something, and.
There is a size area, there is an area requirement for each sleeping room.
Mm-hmm.
So there is a minimum size in that.
But is there a minimum requirement for where the owner sleeps?
No. They could sleep in the living room, not on the couch.
Yeah, that kind of is where I, I start to wonder about what the intent is.
Well, I think the intent is to provide what we traditionally think of as a, as a bed and breakfast, and I think in this day and age, we don't necessarily see them as much as we maybe have seen in the past because of the availability of things like Airbnb and so forth, but, so the, the regu, the regulations are in line with what would be considered to be kind of a traditional, but bed and breakfast. But I don't think there's anything there that, beyond these requirements, that we have anything about where the owners occupy and, and so forth. It's really figuring out where these guest occupants are.
Okay, so it is ti, okay, so it's tied to the mom suite and the master suite? That's in the special use.
Correct.
There's not another, another bedroom that could be rented out to fill the eight?
Yes, I mean, they have to identify the sleeping rooms.
I'm sorry. I get it. It makes sense.
It's, it's kind of like, so that, same thing like when we looked at that one on Spring Hill, they actually identified, in that case, they actually only had one room, and that they were only going to permit no more than two at a time, but they had to identify the specific room where they're going to rent out.
So now you could have a family of four, and my family of four stays in a two-bedroom hotel room all the time. So I get it. This makes sense.
I think one safety measure for us is that this isn't a use by right. It requires a special use permit, so it's not like these are going to be popping up in places and you're going to regret it. We have to look at each one individually, and if it makes sense, gets a permit. If it doesn't make sense, it wouldn't get a permit, so I, I'm pretty comfortable, I guess, by virtue of the fact that it's a special use, that, and that's got some fairly rigorous criteria before those are happening.
Don't, don't we require that there's a ba, a bathroom and a closet also?
According to the write-up, there is in each room.
In order to, in order to do that, so it, you couldn't just have fifteen rooms and start renting them out, or?
My question's more educational for me.
It's kind of better.
Do have, but I don't, I thought it was maybe a requirement.
I'll make the motion that application SUP twenty twenty dash oh three A for a special use permit amendment for an existing bed and breakfast established at fifty-eight eighty-five Haney Lane be scheduled for a public hearing at the April twelfth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission regular meeting.
Support.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries.
Well, it's going to be a busy night.
It is, well, maybe.
So, and in follow-up to that, we'll investigate the issue related to occupants. So that's an interesting, you know.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up, because I think we never quite looked at that, that way, so I think it's really good for us to evaluate that.
Never assume things.
Molly, were you?
In the future.
Were you a law school professor and a former life or something? That was a diabolical question.
It's a great question.
It's right on.
Yeah. Trying to confuse it.
All right. Looks like on the agenda, we're doing public comment before we do other business. Is that right? We're going to do that?
Yeah, I guess we, this is, this next item come up is really just a discussion. It's not.
Okay, then we'll.
It's not really formal action.
The next item is public comment, and once again, if any members of the public have anything they want to ask us or tell us, now is your second and final time of the night to do that. All right, we're going to close that public comment, since nobody wants to talk to us. The next item on the agenda is other business. Planning Department Report twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one, a discussion regarding South twenty-two.
Yeah, so this was a project that was actually approved back in October of twenty twenty-one to develop a multifamily residential housing complex, and that was approved for two hundred and sixteen units at the time. They did do an amendment to that project back in summer of last year to, based on some of their apartment buildings, did reconfigure and actually reduce the number of internal units within those three large buildings. But this is located on Ham, Hammond Road and Lefrane Road on the northwest corner, and it's about twenty-one acres of land. It's, South twenty-two is to be occupying. And they approached us recently, talking about the need to look at altering their layout, and I'll let them speak to that a little bit more in detail. But this would be essentially altering the layout as they've kind of presented here in concept. It would be more of a continuation of Ridge forty-five. This is something that, what I wanted to do, or what they've kind of asked as well, is to just have this conversation. There's no action tonight. This is similar to a conceptual review, where it's just to kind of get some feedback from the Planning Commission in terms of what's, what's appropriate in terms of the next steps. We looked at it from the zoning ordinance standpoint when we look at special use permits. Unless a, there's a actual violation of a special use permit, a special use permit continues essentially in perpetuity unless there's some change, whether a new use comes on the site or something of that nature. We don't, the idea of potentially combining this with the Ridge forty-five special use permit is not really anticipated by the ordinance. That being said, we think the, kind of the, the approach would be is to run, if this is pursued, is to kind of run two concurrent SUPs. Essentially, the development will probably look all as one single development, but at least from the permit side would be actually two of them running side by side. We can do some coordination through that, through the report and decision orders. It would require, we believe, the amendment of the Ridge forty-five one, because I think there are some requirements in there that would be satisfied on both sides of that development, so things such as buffering and landscaping could be necessarily not required because they're kind of more of this one continuous development. But anyways, I just wanted to kind of present those comments, and it might be appropriate for the applicant to present on this.
Okay, Scott, you want to?
Hi, Peter Olazuk with Ridge forty-five. Turns out, I guess it's been a while since the last time we were up here before the commission, so good evening. Yeah, really, John kind of hit it right on the head, is, we've obviously worked with the township for so long that we thought it would be most appropriate, as we're looking at the economics of what we had originally proposed somehow back into twenty twenty-one already, that we've really come to the conclusion that, based off of construction costs, really what we've seen for rental demand and things like that in our, and obviously Ridge forty-five, we've got a pretty good poster child of what's kind of the evolution. It's kind of a crazy story, but within two years, a lot of things have changed, as everybody's kind of seen. And so really, we're here before you tonight, kind of to discuss the plan, kind of with the expansion of Ridge forty-five, really in itself, that will be buildings that look the same, interact the same, sidewalks, kind of green spaces, all of that will all interact and kind of be together as one. But for the most part, access points stay the same. The roads, for the most part, in configuration from what was previously approved, will stay the same with slight modifications, just simply because of parking. The most noticeable change is, one, we've got a reduction in our actual overall density from what was originally proposed, and as you can see from the plan, from what we had originally proposed, the green spaces increased quite a bit as well, not only from the corner, but also internally, just, just across the board. I don't exactly have that calculation, but it's, it's sizable. Scott, I don't know if, yeah, we're, we're in the process of putting it together, but really, we're here before you tonight to just simply discuss, this is, you know, we can truthfully say that we've got some pretty solid real-time market data, as we've kind of gone through this process with what we, what we have and what we operate at Ridge forty-five, and, and this is really the evolution of what's taken in the, just the past couple of years. As you can see, we've moved earth for the original plan. However, I don't think anybody anticipated what twenty twenty-two was going to bring with just the overall cost of everything, and that's why the evolution is, is turned into just kind of the expansion of what we know, the known quantity pairs well with the rest of the development, and, and we really think just kind of is a nice continuation, and really a wrap-up of the remaining vacant land on, south, south of Ridge forty-five, ergo, South twenty-two. So, we're really creative with names, so. So, bless you. So really, it's, as you can see the plan, if you're, you're, obviously, I'm assuming you're familiar with our buildings, you know, we're, we're adding a couple of different units where they're actually still will be trying to do the studios in these new buildings, but for the most part, it'll be the two-bedroom, two-bath, one-bedroom, one-bath, some three-bedroom, two-bath, and then sprinkled in some of the studio apartments, which are more of the smaller footprint. But overall, I think it's a reduction in density by, I want to say, eighteen, twenty units by the time all is said and done? So. And you're, he's just going to keep going.
The idea right now is to share all the existing amenities, but we've, if you look at the plan, we've, we've got some big box areas where, as demand increases, if the pool is necessary, if another community building is necessary, those are items that we would use some of those block spaces that are identified, both at the intersection and, you know, in that inside corner. So we can envision some, some other amenities, but at this point, we won't be proposing those, because I, I think it'd be a shot in the dark, because, you know, as we build the next phase of buildings, those will kind of come online. We don't need to have a community building on this piece of property, because there already is a community building existing. So we're, we're saving those spaces for future amenities, and then at that time, we would come back to you guys for updated site plan approval.
I gather from staff, what they just said earlier, that there's, if this goes, comes to happen, you'd end up with two separate special use permits, just because our ordinance doesn't seem to provide for consolidation, but there would not be a way that you could split them, ownership-wise, would there, so that the South twenty-two gets sold to someone, so and Ridge forty-five is, is independent of that? Because if, if that could happen, that might, I would think, have a bearing on community rooms and pools and all those other things. If, if they're going to be shared, they got to be shared. If they're not necessarily going to be shared, we ought to know that, too.
The intent is that it's going to be the one ownership, and that it's the one development as a whole, so I don't see where, to try to sell off a portion would bastardize it to the point where I don't even see where that would be viable, especially with kind of the space. But the intent is just an expansion of Ridge forty-five and the expansion of really the, the use and the residence with the existing amenities that we have, and then allowing the residents to really kind of dictate what the future amenities are going to be in the spaces that are provided, so. I, I understand your question. That's not, I don't know how else to, that's not the intent whatsoever. Obviously, we've, we've kind of operated and owned it in that, in the capacity that it's been, even in its multiple phases at that point as well, so.
I'd kind of like to have maybe council take a look at that. It's tough to restrain alienability of parcels, and if they've got two separate special use permits, people might think, I can sell this one and keep this one, but if that's not what we're thinking is going to happen or could happen, we want to make sure it can't happen.
Particularly if their, if their approval has amenities on one parcel that are, I mean, we have an interest in those residents as an approving body to make sure that they have rights in perpetuity to those shared amenities.
I think that's the thought of bringing up both of these special use permits as amendments, because you can tie them together through conditions, that they have rights on each other's.
There would be an amendment of both of the special use permits, so we would not only adjust the South twenty-two special use permit that was done a couple of years ago, we'd go back to the Ridge forty-five SUP as well. We can run them parallel, because they're essentially functioning together, but through those report and decision orders, we can tie those together. So I think that would be appropriate, just because that really does then have that relationship through those permits, and that, and I think that would be sufficient to achieve that, so long as they recognize the relationship there.
So is it not possible to take the South twenty-two special use permit and throw it in the garbage?
Unless you do a violation, then we go through a revocation process, which is not something we, no, unless you really violate the, the SUP.
The revocation process, like we can petition the township to.
No.
There's nothing for rescindment.
Once you start, you know, movement, well, it just doesn't anticipate it, because it, this is, this is quite frankly, not a very common thing.
Scenario, yeah.
But it, it's, it's the nature of special use permits, because they run with the land, and, and so when the, when the Planning Commission gives you a special use permit, technically, it's not to you, it's to that property, and what you can do on that, or anybody can do on that property, because you, allows you to sell that, and somebody else can continue that. So it doesn't, it's just something that it doesn't anticipate, these.
I think from our, from our perspective, that's the narrative we want to give you. So however we get to that, that's their, that's what we, that's what we want to do, is like, throw it away.
Yeah.
And whatever that looks like in your guys' world, I, I think that's fine, but I, I don't want to make such a convoluted situation that we have seven new buildings that are going to have all these agreements, so that we can tie them with a community building, which is what we really want to do.
Well, it wouldn't be that hard for us, really, because it's really two documents, it's two report and decision orders. The only thing I would, and this is where it would probably be helpful to have council weigh in on it, is could there be a completely new special use permit that supersedes both of those?
That's what we're thinking.
You know.
Yeah, it's really tying it together, so.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know if that's, if, if that's legal or not. That's one thing that would, I, I'd want council's opinion on, so that would be another all, potentially alternative. We didn't really anticipate something like that, but quite frankly, the two permits, tying them together, I don't think is going to be that difficult. But I, I think we can look at, at one overall permit, brand-new one that would supersede.
Super special use.
Well, it would just, so it does open up the whole property for that. It's, it's, it's no longer two amendments, but it's a brand-new permit. But we can take a look at that as well.
Mister's questions, thoughts, comments, discussion time?
Well, I, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was sorry to see the quadplexes go away, but I understand.
Yeah. We were, too. Truth, truthfully, it was one of those where then it just became math, and the math just, it did not play in the favor that made it viable.
For me to get a, make sure I have a clear understanding, I want to go back a couple steps. So when you came to us before, and it was, and it was South twenty-two, was that different owners than Ridge forty-five?
No, it was the same. Again, it was just the creativity in our naming to really differentiate from. The idea in twenty twenty-one was, all right, you've got Ridge forty-five, and that exists, the buildings that you see and kind of the community that's there, and then it was going to be South twenty-two, and then it was turning into the flats and the commons, and that was the, you had the buildings that were kind of along the road frontage, and then you had the, really, the four-unit homes that were kind of off, kind of more centralized.
Yeah.
And that's through the evolution, and I'm, all of you kind of recognize the economic impact with cost, it just.
Right, right, that wasn't, that wasn't where I was going with my line of conversation. So if it was the same owners, I, I, we, I remember having pretty extensive discussion about the, the, the community building and pool, and it was, unless I'm wrong, made pretty clear that the, the, the South twenty-two was not going to have access to that.
That was correct, yeah. Originally, the plan was not that it was, yeah.
That's all, I needed that. So now you're saying, everybody's going to have access to it?
Everybody, that's, yes, a resident of Ridge forty-five.
That's the, the step I'm saying. So you came to us before, it was the same owners. So, you came to us before, it was the same owners, you proposed South twenty-two and said, and I remember clearly because it was other PUDs that we had these same discussions about that were changed and then services weren't shared. So, it was clear that the pool and fitness center and community building were not going to be accessed by the South twenty-two people. That was, okay. But now the, in the amended PUD that you're coming to us, you're saying that all the, what's now going to be more of Ridge forty-five will have unlimited access to all those amenities.
Yes.
That's all I needed, that's the only question I have. So, that's, that's, it's an interesting evolution of what we just talked about two years ago, you know, because it was pretty adamant that they weren't going to have that.
We would end up having a public hearing on this if this goes forward, right?
Well, if we do it the way we're mentioning in, in my memo, it would basically, you would have two public hearings because basically you're mending two of them parallel together. Unless there is that option that I just mentioned about the idea of creating a new one, you're basically going to go through the process all over again, so.
But them two public hearings could be the same time, the same.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they would be just like parallel. It would almost, from a legal standpoint, they're separate, but from the relationship and so forth, they're pretty much seamless.
They haven't built anything for Rid, for South twenty-two. Nothing's been built yet, right?
Correct. It's just been site work, just mass grading.
Does, so does that vest the PUD? Could that PUD be, or I'm sorry, could that be, could Ridge twenty, excuse me, could South twenty-two just be vacated and Ridge forty-five be amended?
Only if there was a violation.
Okay.
So, there's a revocation provision, but once the, there's nothing, there's no rescindment of a, a non, you know, violation, recintment of.
There's no process.
SUP, once it's been approved, there's the, just as like there's the ability to extend, like we've seen where, where people can extend it, that's something that gives, but the only other thing is if there's a violation.
How long do they, how long does it have to sit with them not doing substantial? Two years? Construction?
Well, they've already done it though.
Yeah, that was the other option. They could sit on the property for a couple of years and then the, the permit would just go away.
Just like Pine Grove Home, we just, we just dealt.
But I, I think they, I don't think they want that option.
Pine Grove Home went away because.
Sitting on it and not doing anything.
Also, they technically started with site work.
Well, we would.
If you interpret it that way.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's site prep. I think we don't consider that necessarily construction, so they could just sit on it, but that obviously is probably not an option.
Well, they started in twenty-one, right?
I think last year they started like clearing the property and grading. So, we don't really consider the grading permit and all that stuff as to actually be construction. That's site prep.
You can do that under a soil erosion permit.
Correct.
Right, that's actually very different, yeah.
I was just thinking if you had started in twenty-one.
Argo, while we're in front of you, because we wanted to leave, you know, in the end of this discussion.
The ordinance is just, it's not a, you know, in this aspect, it's just not very robust and doesn't really anticipate this. So, we, we looked at it from all different angles and.
Maybe a longer term potential update to the zoning ordinance, we want to put in something. There was one type of development that allowed rescind, I think it was one of the planned developments that allowed for rescindment, but not, it was very narrow in its description, so.
We're comfortable with going with amending both SUPs. We think that the, the report and decision orders can be constructed in a way that, that ties the permits together and, you know, they're recorded together and so forth. We'll still look into that one option if we could do a, a completely brand new permit.
Well, I, I can understand why you wouldn't want to be able to revoke special use permit. Somebody could put a special use permit in and, and then revoke it and you have a nonconforming, massive nonconforming use on a piece of property. So, you gotta lock that special use permit to the property. So, I, I get that. I, I don't think we're going to apologize for that, but, but if you can figure out a way to, to tie it together, you know, let's just go that route and see what happens, so.
Well, we're talking about maybe having more people sharing the same amenities like the clubhouse and the pool. If this was two different condominium projects, at a public hearing, we'd have all kinds of property owners that would be coming and would have something that they could say to us about the issue. But if this is one owner for all of this land, we're not going to have that kind of presentation. I guess once upon a time, we must have looked, no doubt we had some help from staff, that whatever was being proposed for Ridge forty-five had an appropriate level of amenities, dog park, community room, pool, whatever. And now we're talking about maybe adding another hundred and ninety-six units to, in effect, the amenities that are being used at Ridge forty-five. I'd kind of like to have some guidance, maybe from staff, if you guys could do some sleuthing and if there's a certain number of apartments or tenants or whatever you want to utilize that are, that, that a particular amenity is capable of providing service to, we ought to know that so that we're not trying to put ten pounds of potatoes in a five pound pool kind of thing.
Sure, right. So, kind of like a ratio of, right.
Yeah, I have no reason to have any suspicions, but I'd hate to have egg on our face years down the road when the people are screaming that they can't get in the pool or they, nobody can ever get in the community room because there's 10,000 people trying to use the same space.
We have requirements for, you know, apartment buildings that are for rent, that they have to have a community building and they have to have a pool and they have to have this and that and the other thing.
Not necessarily for, I mean, a, a special use permit. I mean, if it was a planned unit development, that could be something that, you know, as, as terms of that, but not specifically for multifamily development in, in R3.
Yeah, I mean, if they were owner, it'd be a whole different deal, but these are rentals.
Well, to John's point.
The owner can do what the owner wants to do.
Well, I, I'm not sure, I'm.
But we, we have, we decide whether a permit's appropriate or not.
True, yeah.
And the permit for Ridge forty-five may have been appropriate for whatever size amenities they were going to give us.
Right.
Based on the number of units that they were providing. Now, if we add a hundred and ninety-six more units, is that still adequate what was provided in the first place? I don't know the answer, maybe it is, but we ought to think about it consciously.
And, and we do have, under the permit process for this development, I don't understand what you're saying, like, I would think for a small, you know, multifamily or, you know, something small, I wouldn't have a whole lot of concern or say or interest as long as they provided some amenities. I'm concerned, as, as John's saying, that this is so big that we have a role to approve the, it's a special permit and that, and even though they don't have an ownership stake in the amenities, we still kind of have an obligation to make sure that the size of the amenities that are provided are, are big enough to serve the community that they're developing. That's, that's kind of what I was feeling and I was actually going to add to what you were saying, John. I kind of feel like it's your guys' responsibility to kind of provide some evidence to us that these additional units, that the, the pool and the, you know, and I like what you said on the one page, oh, it's right here, you know, that the, the demands are going to basically, and, and, you know, the future capacity constraints, whatever, that you're going to provide some amenities, but we're going to see those amenities as part of this PUD or, or.
SUP.
SUP, sorry, I keep going, it's SUP. We're going to see those amenities as part of this SUP process. They're not going to be ambiguous to be determined in the future, correct?
The plan is to continue to submit as we go through it and we kind of learn through the evolution of what the rental, really just to see what the community evolves and, you know, what we could think for an amenity right now turns out to be an irrelevant amenity, you know, just because of renter feedback.
As you build out the build.
As you build out. I mean, it's, and that's just what we've seen in the evolution. Our occupancy with our community center or pool is, is monstrous based off of the use and, you know, you might have, you know, four hundred rental places, but only fifty of those units have a tendency to use the, you know, facility.
Right, right.
So, that's, that's, that's kind of the evolution that it's an amenity that's provided, but for a lot of people, it's, it's just simply there as, you know.
And I'm concerned that we don't, I mean, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the biggest apartment complex in all of Northwest Michigan, right?
Well, I, I don't know where, Arbers is at is fairly big as well.
Arbers is big too?
It's one of, possibly one of.
One of the bigger ones?
Yeah.
So, all I'm suggesting is.
It certainly has been an evolution, that is for sure.
All I'm suggesting is that if you guys can bring some evidence to us that says, hey, you know, our amenities are adequately sized for the units that we have and these units we're going to add to them, then I'd be satisfied and, and then it gives you guys the opportunity to just review their evidence from, you know, apartment amenity sizing elsewhere. That's the kind of evidence I would expect you guys to provide, just market, market evidence that says this is the size pool you need for five hundred and, five hundred and ninety-six units and it's adequate so that we don't end up with egg on our face down the road when, you know, the, it turns out that you're, I mean, certainly you guys don't want to build something that's undersized, but we have a role in approving it anyways and we would all have egg on our face, so.
And, and because I noticed when we were looking at it, that, you know, like when we approved this and it had really two identifiable amenities, there was a dog park and a patio grill picnic area, okay? So, when you revised, I see the dog park's still there, but the patio and the grills were removed, you know? Those are the things that we originally required to meet the, the density, you know, and you've, you've commented, there's a lot more green space, which is great. Well, to me, that means there's also more room to maybe provide some other amenities, you know?
Yeah, and that, that's the intent. We just, as we've said, we don't know what those really are going to look like yet. I mean, obviously, there's no logical reason why I would want to do this and then compromise the ability for this to actually be occupied and, and making a profit, so.
Well, based on.
And amenities are usually values that, you know, are usually provide feedback and then are a value that is provided to the renters, so, yeah, agreed. But I think we've also proven with everything we've developed so far that we're not here to make a, a poor product that would perform well and put egg on the face of the township, so.
And I don't mean to suggest it by asking for it at all.
Okay.
All I'm saying is let's have some documents in place to know that we asked the question and it was answered and, you know, the amenities are big enough.
And we can cer, we'll, we'll certainly try to provide that information for as best as what the market will kind of provide for a pool square footage to, whatever that might be. So, we, we can work on substantiating that in our occupancy and things like that.
Well, I think the point though is, I was going to try to get evolve around to is, you know, we've, in recent experience with similar projects, you know, the, the site plan needs to be followed in, 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 in process, but by the same token, we don't really need you to be coming back every time you want to add a basketball court or a tennis court or a picnic area.
Yeah.
Every time. It's not part of the site plan. And so, you know, how can we weigh those things and say, look, we, we anticipate that based on, I mean, you're, you're literally around numbers, you're going from, you know, if I counted right, you know, sixteen buildings, you're, you know, adding seven, I think, I counted, I think I counted sixteen or somewhere around, you're almost adding fifty percent occupancy to this project. So, it stands to reason, there should be fifty percent more amenities available as, in that same density, if, if you understand what I'm saying. You're asking for high density, you gotta go back to, what's this, what's this zone?
R3.
R3.
R3, okay. So, so the density that they're asking for is significantly higher than R3, correct? Or is it?
No, it's still meeting, they're, no, they're not exceeding.
They're lower.
We're lower.
But by the same token, we still have always required amenities, you know, and, and, and I don't want to go backwards on those things. So, if we can show them, propose them and try to figure out what those are ahead of time, it'll save coming back every time you want to add one or finding out they don't need them, so.
I, I, or maybe you're about to say it, Steve. Go ahead. I think that we grant the SUP and then each cluster of buildings comes through as an individual, individual site plan approval, correct?
No, no, it's all part of the SUP. The site plan and the SUP are wrapped together.
Okay.
So, it would be that time when you see it as now or when you go through the process.
So, then Joe's really right, we need to see what those amenities are as part of that approval now.
An amenity added later will require amendment to the PUD, the SUP.
Yeah, right, right.
We can, I think this is also a good reason that we're opening up the Ridge forty-five SUP because that had an approval process to it that was based on the number of units that was part of it. We don't have like the findings of fact in front of us right now, but see what those were, see what was in the RDO and it's like, why was that decision made based on this data? What's changing now that it's going to be tied to this and it's giving more people using that site, using those amenities? And that actually works both ways. Like if there's an outdoor ones that might be on South twenty-two's site, it should work the same way. People at the current Ridge forty-five should be able to use that as well and vice versa. And that ties it to things like, we've seen some examples in PUDs that they're slightly different, but they have the condo associations and they separate and then they, we've had people ask us about people walking onto their property. It's like, the reason of tying them together is to avoid that situation. And it's a little different because it's a special use permit, but we're trying to avoid that.
And it's one or two, it's still, it's still the same owner too.
Right.
Joe, do you think that they could have some flexibility by having a, you know, an area designated, and I'm, I guess I'm asking you guys this too, because you have an, an area designated for an amenity and the SUP says and is approved for this amenity, that amenity or the other amenity are all seen in ours as being equal, which would give you some flexibility to pick what, what amenity the market is interested in as you're building it out, knowing, and we would know we're going to get one of those three amenities in that space. Gives you some flexibility, gives us some certainty that there's going to be an amenity there, makes the SUP more complicated maybe, but with that, you think, Joe, or?
So, you could put it, you could, as part of the approval, you could identify those potential amenities. They may not be built at the time, so if they're, if you anticipate, or if they anticipate at some point in the future, they want to include those amenities, you could do that as part of the, you know, they've kind of identified potentially, you know, this could be an area for, let's say, a community building and a pool. The process for that wouldn't necessarily mean where they'd have to kind of go through and do a full blown, a, a full amendment if it's based on, you know, certain size requirements. You know, we typically look if it's less than fifteen percent of the floor area, but you could put something into the fact that I could see would be appropriate is to consider it like a minor amendment. We did double check that, but something of that nature, which would be still a meeting with the planning commission, but it wouldn't be the full blown, you know, three meeting process with public hearing and everything like that. And that's something that we could potentially look at. Gives them some flexibility so that, you know, you anticipate that they will provide some of those many potentially at the future. Here would be the, kind of the, the appropriateness of those being accepted.
And just if I'm, I apologize, I've got a last name.
Say it.
Agustinelli?
Agustinelli, good.
Agustinelli, okay. Once you say Olazook enough times, you can pretty much figure anything else out from there. And, and really that's, so you, you, to kind of understand, obviously, it's been an evolution for the three of us as we've kind of been reviewing the plan. And yes, the original one showed the amenities and the existing, and the new buildings we were doing, we were trying to add community space there primarily because of the interaction with the elevator and things like that. But for us, our conundrum is, is that we, we don't see ourselves needing a community center because of the size of the one that we built, but there is a chance that a pool, you know, we might do an, a, a pool that might be, you know, more of just a lap pool and not the really special pool that we built there, or maybe we just need a, a fitness center. But at the same point in time, you don't really know where that evolution's going to go based off of how people are using the space. And so, that's why, you know, we, we're showing the intent that, look, we're creating the area so that we can do this, but we really don't know if it's a pool, hell, it could be no pool, just give us pickleball courts for as far as we can see and we're happy. I mean, that's, that's really been the evolution of, of what we've seen in these communities. And that's why even some of our, our stormwater areas are just large fields of, you know, they, they become soccer fields and they become planting gardens. We found that truthfully, garden areas that we've kind of designated that people rent plots has been probably one of the most popular amenities we've ever provided. And it's literally two by twelves in a box and people have a certain plot and they grow everything and vegetables and fruit are passed out across the community. So, it's, some of the crazy, we do, we think traditionally an amenity is a community center, a pool and a fitness center in some capacity. And it's kind of the evolution of a community has gone much farther than that. And that's why we want to make sure we, we leave more than enough green space, allowing flexibility to see where we go, also not wanting to be just an absolute pain in the neck with the township as we're going through approvals, but also recognizing the fact that since we started this in fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, obviously, there's been a major evolution, not only in our society, but also in kind of life and expectations for what in our society, but also in kind of life and expectations for what a, kind of living conditions and what, what people expect outside. And, and that's, that's why we're just trying to leave it blank without stamping it and saying, this is what we're going to do so that then we have to come back and say, all right, look, turns out nobody wanted this, can we, can we kind of get a do-over? I'm, I'm already doing that once. I don't want to do that again, so, so, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and that was my point, is how specific do we need to be to get moving on this? I, you know, having a list of, okay, in this area, you can have a dog park or a grill or something else. Well, I think that's too specific for these guys. They, they have designated areas where they're going to be doing things. How, how specific do we need to be to feel comfortable that they're going to do those, do those things? And then if you don't put a time limit on it, well, okay, they might say they're going to put a pool in someday or, or something else, or, you know, flower beds or, you know, whatever it is, but if it's, you know, is that six months from now or is that five years from now or how do, how do you, how specific do we need to be?
Right. So for this to be, if you want something built as part of this approval, it has to be specific, has to be on the site plan and identified, because otherwise then it, the project doesn't get closed out. For those things that are suggested that might happen in the future, it doesn't, you don't have anything that binds them to that.
Okay.
So that, that can be suggested, but that will require an improvement to the site plan anyways, or to the, or to the special use permit.
But that could just be something that comes to staff?
Yeah, I mean, when I look at that, if you were to, you know, one of the things that the SUP in terms of, it's got administrative amendments, minor amendments, and then major amendments, I would see if it was already previously identified, similar to the context of what's written here on this kind of conceptual plan where it talks about having some type of amenities there. I think that could be done administratively. I think the impact of it overall is, is pretty minor when you look at the scale and scope of the project. If that were to ha, the requirement for that to happen, I mean, I don't know how you necessarily have some requirement in the future. You either require it now or you don't require it at all. It just, this would just identify option for them with the understanding that we anticipate that there could be some amenity installed at there at that, some point in the future and most likely probably be an administrative amendment.
And that seems like a more flexible way for us to go than to start spelling out exactly what you have to do here and you could do this here, or?
Yeah, like, yeah, unless it's in the plan right now, I mean, there's really kind of no point in getting into that discussion.
Yeah.
I think some of it will come from, once they have a submittal, part of it will be some of the impact statement and background. They'll have their experience of running Ridge 45 now and kind of knowing what their level of amenities they need versus what they're going to be adding. I think ultimately, it's, if they, if there's evidence that they're going to need something and they plan to have it, whatever that amenity is, might be flexible as to what is installed, but it's mostly looking at that in relation to some of the other requirements, like there's required open space, there's required landscaping. I think ultimately, it's if they think they're going to need something or we think they're going to need something based on the evidence that's submitted, to plan for it now. The, the trouble we want to avoid down the line is if they, like, overbuild or have something else and then come back and think they need something and there's no room to do it unless they cut into required open space. We want to make sure that's going to be maintained.
But they've identified spaces.
Exactly, so it's just, that's, as long as they have planned for something that it still meets all the other requirements, like whatever specific thing that is.
They're going to have a bunch of Italians move in there and they want bacio ball all the way through then here.
There you go.
Yeah, large picnic, yeah, who, you never know where it could go, I suppose, or, yeah, if it's Polish, it's just going to be a large area where they can dance, I suppose, but, but that's, and truthfully, that's, and I can speak just because I'm, I'm Polish and I look forward to Polish festival, but, you know, but that's really why we're in front of you is because we wanted to get the feedback. Obviously, it is something that's, it's a major cha, it's a major change from what we proposed, but it's not a major change from what is there. So it's, it's kind of a continuation of what is there, but it's a major change from what we were originally proposing. I wish I wasn't before you tonight because of that, but because of economic, economic certain situations has just forced us to be practical and, and pursue what makes the most sense for the development and kind of that, the rest of the success for the, our remaining property. So recognizing completely, we do need to expand, we, we need to expand our amenities and we have full intentions to, we just don't know what those all, what all those are going to be, so.
Is there a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Will your monthly rental fees at South 22 mirror, what's average, 45 or close for one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
It will really be a continuation from the marketing, from the lease-up and all that type of stuff. It will be the same. Yes, sir. Obviously, with the introduction of studios, that'll be something different, but that will be comparable to what market will, will bear, so.
Other questions? Do you guys have any other questions you want answered by us?
Thought overall? I mean, obviously, I've gotten the feedback in regards to the, you know, kind of the amenities, but just, obviously, I know it's a change from what was originally proposed, but I'd just like to know that at least I'm not completely losing my mind, I suppose, would be beneficial.
My first reaction is it makes sense, but just a first reaction, because I hadn't studied it before, but.
Hey, I'll take first reactions of being pr, practical makes sense, for sure. Be amazed how many times you, somebody looks at you and says, what are you doing? It's like, oh, I'm trying to make sense here, but it's.
I like it, and I, I trust that staff can work with you guys to bring forth something that balances all the complexities we've talked about tonight and, and, you know, you guys have had, as I recall, pretty efficient approval processes with us in the past, so I hope that we can continue that trend.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for the time tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete. Moving along, the next item is to talk about items for our next agenda. That'd be the meeting in two weeks, and it looks like staff is going to be working with us on a portion of the master plan update. What do you want to tell us about that?
So the, this will be your kind of first study session, getting into actually starting to work on plan development, actually writing out the master plan in, in, in basically some of the chapters. We do start off with the housing analysis and recommendations, and that's not necessarily a, there will be a housing chapter within the plan, but this is getting, starting at a little bit ahead of, we probably won't get into an actual draft chapter of the housing chapter probably until like June or July, but we wanted to provide you with some information and we're going to provide you with some recommendations to get your feedback, so that when we come later back in the summer months, that we'll have something that we, that we know that you're kind of looking for. So this will just be a kind of a recap of all the conversations, a lot of the data and information that we talked about over the last couple of years in, in preparation for this process, and then, you know, just kind of get you some of our thoughts, what we think that are things that the, should be included in the master plan, whether it's land use policy and identifying areas for new growth, as well as some recommendations related to our zoning ordinance. To really make some changes into our ordinance, we really need to understand what is, what's the purpose of these, where, how are they going to be applied? Because I think the varied, the, the variety of neighborhoods that we have in Garfield is, is, is quite extensive. You have, you know, rural areas and then you got some more kind of urban feeling areas, and so how we apply some of these tools related to housing are going to be different in different areas depending on where you're at. So we'll be suggesting some things to get some feedback that will ultimately lead at some point in the future, going through the ordinance and making some changes, but the foundation for those changes needs to be in the master plan. We'll also just be recapping, we've had conversations with some of our neighboring communities, just kind of recap, just to let you know the, what the results of those conversations, and then also talking about vision and core concepts. So this, vision statements are, where do, you know, where do you see, you know, Garfield looking like in the future? And these are pretty broad statements. We'll build on the Township Board did a strategic plan a few years ago. We're, we're going to be building on that vision and some of these core concepts of, like I said, one of the challenges we have is, what is the identity of Garfield? It is so varied, and it's got a lot of different natural features, a lot of built environment is different. And so how do we kind of bridge this together? The future land use map identifies future land uses in specific areas, but how does it kind of unify this as a community in terms of how it functions? So we'll talk about things that we presented previously, like the idea of nodes and districts. So larger district areas are kind of like sub-areas, similar to like the Barlow-Garfield neighborhood plan that was done. Nodes are very specific, typically centered around activity areas that are around intersections and so forth, and then corridors, areas, how we link areas together through whether those are typically are road corridors, but those can also be non-motorized corridors as well. So some of those core concepts, which I think provide the foundation for the overall theme of the plan, and, and so as we then get into those chapters related to the natural environment or the housing and so forth, that those will all be extensions of trying to achieve that larger vision. So those will be our, our goal areas to basically focus on the vision. So that's kind of the, the overall conversations we'll have next week, or, excuse me, in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, John. Anything else? Anybody up for the good of the order?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We're adjourned. I'm, I'm going.